Roll call please.
Chair Cervantes?
Present.
Vice Chair Munoz? Commissioner Alceroff? Commissioner Donnelly?
Here.
Commissioner G?
Here.
Commissioner Holguin? Commissioner Lu?
Here.
Leeson? Yeah, 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 you got the wrong, the person from the previous. The pre- Yeah, yeah, it's listed here, needs to be changed. Okay, let's go on to pu- uh, public comments and suggestions.
Sorry, we have a quorum?
Yes, we do, we have five.
There are no public comments.
Okay, or suggestions? No? Okay, so, in that case, we'll go, go on to the presentation on South Pasadena Police Department Detective Bureau Solvability Factors.
Number three.
Sir, we have to go over the minutes?
Yes, oh, did I keep that, I'm sorry?
No, no, it's, it's number three, but we can jump in.
Oh, okay. I, I move to approve the minutes?
My second.
Oops, okay, so Chair Cervantes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Munoz? Commissioner Alceroff? Commissioner Donnelly? Commissioner G? Commissioner Holguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Lu?
Approved. Okay, let's go on to the next topic, which is the Public Safety Commission Work Plan, a consideration for adoption and discussion of public safety commissions.
I think, I think we're gonna go back to the-
We, we, we'll go back to the presentation?
Yeah, you set it up.
Oh.
Chair Cervantes, if we could go out of order, my apologies, uh, we have a presentation-
Out of order, okay, I'm sorry. All right, but let's go ahead then and do the, uh, what's called the presentation?
Correct, and I'd like to introduce Sergeant Tony Abdallah, he's in charge of the South Pasadena Police Department's Detective Bureau.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cervantes, Commissioners, Councilmember Braun. Um, my name's Tony Abdallah, I currently run our detective bureau. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you a, a program that we're on the verge of implementing known as solvability factors. It was working like two seconds ago. Technology, gotta love it. Um, just a little background, this is not a new concept, but it is new to our unit. Because it's enabled by our new CAD and records management system. But solvability factors are characteristics that patrol officers identify during a preliminary investigation. They're used to predict investigative outcomes. The concept of solvability factors has been along, or been around for quite some time. It was heavily studied in the seventies and eighties. Um, and it continues to be refined through research, studies, and collaborative efforts of various academics and experts as well. There is a large gap in the study between the eighties and the most recent one that I, I thought was most, uh, applicable. It was a study that was commissioned by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, in conjunction with the Center for Police Research and Policy for the University of Cincinnati. And that was a case study that was done of the Knoxville Police Department, which studied clearance rates for robbery and burglary, uh, I'm sorry, robbery and yes burglary, uh, case clearances. It's important to, to identify these solvability factors during the, again, the preliminary investigation because it gives us a good window into whether or not a case can likely be solved at some point in the future. I, I think it's important to point out that solvability factors, and I'll, I'll go into a list here shortly, but they're not, much like law enforcement in general, it, there's not an absolute guarantee. If there is the presence of a solvability factor, still yield, the investigations can still yield unexpected outcomes. And I, I'd probably give you an example like a case that, um, has no workable leads, but at some point, we get a tip. And that tip leads to the identification of a suspect. Even though there may not be the presence of solvability factors in the initial investigation, that could be, uh, helpful. So we have to be a little flexible with the program, if you will. And again, since this concept has been used or in use for a number of decades now, there are many agencies across the United States that have implemented it into their workflow. It's attractive to us, um, for a number of reasons, and here are our objectives. It's to implement a program that creates a systematic and unbiased case evaluation process that helps us best utilize our investigative resources. Right now, we are resource constrained when it comes to investigating cases. Uh, we have several hundred cases in our queue, uh, right now that may have workable leads. So this is gonna help us focus our efforts on identifying those cases that have significant investigative leads versus ones that only have minimal investigative leads. And a byproduct of a more refined, uh, process, if you will, it's gonna help expedite the investigative review, um, which will in turn, um, provide better service to the community without, uh, nobody wants to have their case languished somewhere. So this will help us, uh, go through the review process, um, in a more, uh, refined way, if you will. I highlighted this in red because I think it's very important to note. The solvability factor cases will only be, um, applicable to property crimes. All crimes against person cases, robbery, homicides, assaults, sex crimes, um, will continue to be assigned to detectives. We'll also have our crime analyst, who is also a detective, review property crime cases before they go into the solvability factor case workflow to try to detect any unique modus operandi. Um, if the crime may be in a series of crimes that are related or anything, um, connected to a retail theft group. And once that review is complete, then the, uh, property crimes cases will, uh, be entered into the solvability factor scoring process. Any property crime case in solvability factor workflow that does not meet the threshold will be administratively closed or placed on an inactive status. We're, we've proposed a six-month pilot program um, so that we can review the program at the conclusion of that pilot to determine its efficacy and its practicality for us. Did it meet our needs? Did it meet our intended outcomes? And if not, what tweaks do we need to make in order to refine it and make that happen? Any cases that were administratively closed during the, um, pilot can be reopened and placed back on an, uh, active status if that becomes necessary. And again, I talked a little bit about flexibility at the beginning. That's important to have. Any case that has mitigating or aggravating circumstances, uh, we have that flexibility as supervisors and detectives to identify that case and assign it as, as becomes necessary. In the event that a case was administratively closed, uh, the victim in that case will receive a letter, and this is an example of it, that expl- that explains the concept of, uh, solvability factors. It's kind of the why behind the program, if you will. So it, it explains the why, highlights a couple areas of things that we're specifically looking for, explains to them that their case has been administratively closed, but also invites them to submit additional information if that becomes available at some point, uh, down the road so we can review it and determine whether or not it's appropriate to reopen the case. So in a nutshell, this helps, um, our communication. I think that's something that, that we could do better. And this will go, I, I think, a long way to helping improve that, that communication loop, if you will. So when it comes to checks and balances, it'll become my job or whoever's currently assigned as the Detective Bureau Sergeant to conduct a random, uh, bi-monthly audit to ensure that, um, the cases are properly scored. Uh, that's kind of the first step, make sure the scoring process was applied, um, as intended, and then determine if there's any modifications that are necessary from that point. So here, here are the questions that, um, we are currently working on setting up in our re- records management system. This is something that we didn't have available to us, uh, in the past, but we're taking advantage of now. And although it's, it's not specifically in the presentation itself, I think it's important to know. We, we've been working on this for several months now, and it was a collaborative effort of every detective in the bureau. But this was also a recommendation that came out of the Raffdellis assessment. So that, this will check that box, and again, um, give us a more systematic instead of subjective process to, to assign cases. So the solvability factors all kind of revolve around identification of a suspect in a case. That's the ultimate goal, that we identify the suspect or suspects involved, and that in turn leads to a higher likelihood of an arrest and prosecution. So you'll see the one at the top of the list, if during the preliminary investigation was the suspect positively identified. If so, that gives us, uh, that's, enables us to focus our effort on getting the elements of the crime, people, all buttoned up, and then present the case to the district attorney where we can seek a warrant. If, if the suspect's not already in custody. Is the case a felony? Is the loss, you'll see the next two questions, is the loss a hundred thousand dollars or more? Or is it between twenty-five and a hundred thousand? There are fraud cases that come across our desk, both identity theft and fraud cases, where the loss is, let's say, in the eight, nine, ten thousand dollar range. But in order to go through the process to try to identify a suspect in that case, there can be upwards of three to four search warrants that need to be served. Some very close analysis of bank records. Significant investigative resources over the course of time that may or may not yield the location of a suspect even being within the boundaries of the United States. A lot of times, it's elsewhere, elsewhere in the world. So that will help us screen down cases, and again, um, because we're resource constrained. Should we, is our time better spent on a case with a higher loss? Versus throwing all of the resources at a case that has a significant loss to the, to the victim? But maybe not in the bigger scheme of things, something that would justify that level investigation. I'll skip down a, a couple, AFIS Quality Prints or DNA, uh, was that collected at all? I have not come across another profession that likes acronyms as much as law enforcement, maybe being a pilot. But we seem to like them, so AFIS, let me explain that to you. That, that is the Automated Fingerprint Identification System. So that is, did we lift a fingerprint? That was of such quality that it can, uh, an identification can be made out of a database with that. That's what that means. Uh, I'll skip down a little bit, uh, towards the bottom, flock search applicable. Back in the seventies and eighties, our flock cameras did not exist. So that question you will not see anywhere, but that element now is a significant investigative resource for us, and I'll give you an example. I'm gonna be purposefully vague because the case is still ongoing. But it relates to a shooting in Garfield Park. We were able to develop evidence and information in that case that enabled us to do a search in the flock system that validated the information that we had received and enabled us in turn to get a suspect in custody in that case within five hours. So we find that as being a very valuable resource. And, and its suitability to be included in the solvability factors program. So just a quick recap. This program will again allow us to focus and prioritize the cases that we have. It will create a more efficient, um, process for us and enable us to better resource allocate the limited resources that we have. It'll also expedite the process. And I, I think key for us is it'll create this systematic and unbiased approach to solving, uh, to evaluating cases. And again, my, my job will be to conduct random audits on a regular basis to ensure that the, uh, the program is, is achieving its desired outcome, its intended outcome. With that, thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question, um, what's the difference between robbery and burglary?
Sure.
Or is there a difference?
There is a difference, and, and the terminology a lot of people use interchangeably. A robbery is a crime against a person where property was stolen through force or fear. So if you will, that's physically grabbing something from somebody or demanding something from somebody, and they're scared for their personal safety so they in turn provide that item to them. A burglary is entering a structure with the intent to commit a grand or petty larceny, so basically a theft. So a house that is broken into, if you will, would be a burglary, not a robbery. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, all right, uh, my next question on this is when you are talking about, uh, the most common crime at this point, which is, uh, robbery, excuse me, burglary on, uh, catalytic converters, which is, it can set you back between five to ten thousand dollars, which does not qualify under the twenty-five thousand. Uh, what is, what option does the person have when a crime like that is committed against them? Because you know, it upends their lives considerably even though it's under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sure, that, that is a great question, and thank you for that, Chair. Let me just take a step back and explain this a little bit more. There, it, we're refining the scoring process that, um, is applied to these questions. So just because there is a no, doesn't mean that we won't investigate the case. It's just that if the cumulative score of all these questions that are answered, if that doesn't reach the threshold, then we'll administratively place it on an inactive status. So in your example, yes, the, the value of the loss is below twenty-five thousand, but if there, if the suspect is positively identified, that there alone, without any other questions, if that question is satisfied, we will assign the case. So, um, some of the other questions, did we get a license plate? Yes, we did. Is there a distinctive, uh, description of the suspect vehicle? Yes. Again, the, the cumulative, um, value of those yes questions is wh- whether or not we'll end up assigning it if it reaches the threshold. Yes.
So I, I completely understand the need to put our resources where we can have the most effect. For those who, cases that don't have the solvability, not enough yeses on your checklist, and you have to generate this letter, is there something we can put in the letter to the community that says something along the lines of even though we cannot help you solve this case, there are other options? Maybe private investigators? Or, I don't know what other options there would be, but things that would make me feel better if I were the victim of-
We're happy to take a look at that. We get in a little bit of precarious situation when we recommend private entities to investigate criminal cases. But I, I think perhaps services that may be applicable in those cases, we could take a look at and perhaps make recommendations for. I ha- happy to take a look at that.
Yeah, and I think that would be nicer to hear the general public to hear that, that there are other options rather than, oh, we can't do anything for you. So it, it just needs to be like a line or two at the end of the letter to say there are other options, if you'd like to discuss more options, feel free to call
Sure.
us, um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's more than, it would give me more reassurance as a community member.
I, I totally get it, nobody wants to hear that their case won't be investigated. And I, I completely get that, if we had our way, and we used to have our way, where we investigated every case that came across our desk. But the volume's just so high now, it, it isn't our reality with the current resources that we have. We're hoping that at some point in the future, we can get back to that, but I, I think that's a great suggestion, and I'm happy to take a close look at that. Sure.
Morning Sergeant, thank you for that, uh, very good presentation, and, and you described, uh, the difference between burglary and robbery, and when it took my criminal law professor like a full week. So I think you may have a, you may have a, a future in that
That's funny.
if, uh, if you ever, uh, would like to. But I have, I have a couple of questions for you, again, appreciate the presentation. Uh, you said this will be applicable to property crimes. Um, so would that be, uh, the property crimes from Title thirteen of the Penal Code, or using a different, um, definition of property crimes?
So property crimes in our world are essentially thefts, uh, residential burglaries, commercial burglaries. Chair Cervantes gave a great example of grand thefts, um, basically theft relates, related cases.
Got it, thank you. Um, who actually does the scoring? Is that the assigned detective, and then you're the one who's doing the audit?
Correct, so when the, the way the workflow is currently in our records management system, all the cases that are routed to us, uh, by the, essentially by the watch commanders, um, fall into a queue for us, and then the detectives will go in and score the cases. So that, um, yeah, this was, I, I think, really helpful in getting those persons involved early on in this, um, process so they're very well aware of what to look for. They're probably best suited for it, I think, due to their expertise. And, um, then they will apply the scoring to it. We will have a training need for the detectives to go to patrol through O-Call training and educate the patrol officers on specifically what we're looking for now so they can help identify those during the preliminary investigation because that's generally where this information's developed.
Great, thank you, uh, one last question. If there is a case with a, a very high solvability rating or score, what's the term, rating or score?
Score, probably.
Uh, would that case potentially get more resources because it's very solvable? Less resources because they may not need as much because it's very solvable? Or would that not really be a factor to consider?
I would say it depends. And I know that's probably not the answer that-
No, that's the lawyer coming out of you again.
But it, um, every case is unique, and there are some things that may not appear or present in a solvability factor assessment, but because of some uniqueness in the case would merit it being raised to the top of the caseload. So that's something that we, we talk about on a regular basis when I get case briefs from the, from the detectives. They're mostly responsible for managing their caseload, but we'll identify those cases that have aggravating or mitigating circumstances and then appropriately place it in the priority pile, if you will.
Thank you Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, my name is, uh, Tony?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, it's very clear. Uh, I have background in law enforcement, uh, tools, software development, so I understand it very, very much.
Nice.
My question is, uh, with this new program, what do you expect from us? From Commissioner, from the community, or from the technology side? What type of investment tools you, you need, you want, so we can improve this solvability factor?
Yeah, thank you for that question, that's a great question, and I think that's one of the, what's the word I'm looking for? One of the deficiencies, if you will, in solvity, solvability factor programs over the course of years. And in fact, one of the recommendations out of that new study I referenced from 2020 was a recommendation for, uh, agencies to more closely track which solvability factor program, or which solvability factor in and of itself led to a, an identification of the suspect. So we're going to be looking at what opportunities we have available to us in the CAD and records management system in order to help determine that. So I would say to answer your question, technical expertise in capturing and tracking which factor or factors were most relevant to solving a case.
Thank you, Brian Slinski, Chief of Police, I wanted to, to comment on that. One of the things we're also looking at with this program, and I think Sergeant Abdallah mentioned it very, very clearly, is we're trying to not only, uh, create a, a more efficient, uh, department through using technology, but also our flock cameras, as he mentioned during the shooting at Garfield Park, the flock cameras were extremely instrumental in identifying and ultimately bringing a suspect into custody. Uh, this commission had an opportunity to see the flock camera presentation as well as some other video, uh, technology on a trip to Beverly Hills, their real-time watch, uh, crime watch center, which Commissioner Donnelly was a part of. As South Pasadena is growing and, uh, our demographics are changing, we're looking at every opportunity to expand our software and technology base. Part of that is, uh, over the summer, we're gonna be getting an additional, uh, grant where we're implementing a, another thirteen flock cameras, uh, individual flock cameras that we're gonna be putting, uh, where some of our gaps are. But as we look to technology, uh, there, i- it's not just about the technology and solving the crime, but also about getting information out. One of the, uh, one of the challenges that we have is, is always funding and awareness. So I would ask that the commission help us with that, and you've done a great job in being part- partners. We're looking at some software right now, haven't made a determination on it, but it's really if you think about UPS or more, let's think about Amazon. When you order something from Amazon, you get a text message or an email saying that your order's confirmed, then it tells you where it's at, in the process, when it's going to be delivered. Even recently, I got a text message of the delivery on my doorstep letting me know it was there. Police department's very similar, right? We are service service driven. So in the detective side of things, some software that we're looking at is very similar, and that is when you make a report, this software would send you a notice saying that your report's been received, is with the detective, it is being filed, you'll be expecting a phone call. If you have any questions, you can click on this link. And then at the end, it'll follow up with a survey to allow the the individual resident or or community member to not only ask questions, but then rate the police department on our service. So all of these things together, between the technology side and identifying a suspect and investigating, but then on the communicative side too, I think it's it's kind of the whole package. So to your point, sir, I think that's where the commission can help us is not only coming up and approving these things and asking great questions, but also helping us in terms of being a partner and identifying some of our some of the needs that we may have or things that that you see in your daily lives that you think might be applicable. So really, it's about a partnership, because a police department is only as good as the partnership it has with its community. And as as commissioners, you are that community as well.
Thank you so much. So clear, yeah.
And it goes back to that communication piece I talked about earlier that we've identified that we can do better on, so. Perfect.
I just have a comment. From reading this letter and from reading what's stated on it, I think as a layperson, not involved in a commission or anything, I feel that something like this would have a chilling effect on the public, thinking that I don't have anything worth $100,000 in my house. Does that mean that my house can be burglarized and nothing will be, nobody will investigate or whatever? And and I know, for me and the commission, that that's not the case, but by looking at this, at this, what you call printed piece of paper, it gives you a terrible feeling that you're at the mercy of the thieves and the thugs. And we really need to be aware that we don't put that, because we are at this point, we're at a point where people in one side are saying, we're spending too much money on police. On the other side, they're saying, we don't need police. And I say to them, I beg your pardon, what are you gonna do? You don't have police. You know, and the cars are gonna be zooming through all our streets, and and we're going to be burglarized, and we won't be protected. That part, people just get their emotion takeover. But this is very important that they don't feel in this, in this app, paper, you must feel abandoned that your case, if it's not between 25 or 100,000, it's gonna be just filed away, and it's gonna lay dormant until it's dismissed, because it just doesn't reach to be investigated, because there were no fingerprints, there were no camera and all that. But to a hardworking person, it is very important. It's their life. So I really wonder if I could make the suggestion that be very careful on your wording on the on the solvability problem report, because if at some point it comes out almost as dismissive as someone who is loved, something precious and dear to them, it's only worth $18,000. And and we do not want to project that to the community. We want to, to me, the best thing we need to do to get the community involved and help the police is for them to know that they have a caring police force that will help them, and in turn, they will also put themselves out to help the police. But what you call, from reading that, I'm going, oh, my. But then, you know, I know the background, what's behind it. I know how many cases you have. I know those, the robberies of the Cadillac Converse are so frequent that it's like not worth going after them. I know that, and I know that must be extremely frustrating for you. I realize that, and I know how short you are people. That is something that people forget, that you don't have the human resources available to you. But we need to be very careful when we state, make amends with this solvability problem report. It's just not, it doesn't come out, it comes out too cold, too unfeeling, too dismissive of someone who is losing something precious to them, but it's not worth a $100,000 or even a $25,000.
Sure. And it was definitely not our intent to to come out that way. That letter is is pretty consistent with other agencies that have implemented the program, and it's basically to serve the notification and the reason why. But we're happy to take a closer look at that language to see if there's something more effective, more, I want to say thoughtful, because I think it's thoughtful, but maybe a better way to convey the message and the why behind it that would perhaps more meet our community's expectations. I'm happy to look at that.
Maybe the word you want is give them some hope that they're not out there in the cold, that they can be robbed and, excuse me, burglarized whenever the thief feel like it, but and that nothing will happen to them because their case will be shelved someplace.
Sure.
It's not enough resources or it's not enough information about it. And you don't want the community to get that feeling of hopelessness.
Sure. Happy to take a close look at that.
I don't have anything the other commissioners already addressed on my question. But thank you for
Thank you all. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If I have one final question, if I may.
Please.
Sergeant, you mentioned, and I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this earlier, you mentioned your current caseload and backlog or queue, I guess, of cases. Would this program be applied retroactively to those cases that are currently in the queue, or would this be a for process for cases that are not in the queue yet?
They would be applied to all cases that are in the queue, and I can break that down a little bit more for you, if you like. We currently have about 750 cases in our queue. Out of those 750 cases, there there are some that should not be in the queue for various amount of reasons, so that when we strip those out and get those around, because we're still refining the workflow in the records management system, we've identified about 300 cases that have one or more workable leads to it. So of those approximately 300 cases, we'll, our intent is to apply this program to. We're hopefully at the very ending stage of getting some additional help in the Bureau through some annuance from other agencies that will be brought on, and they're very experienced detectives before they retire. So we'll train them in the process, and they will go through and apply those factors to the existing cases. Thanks.
One more question. Can you give us some idea what the workload looks like? You have 750 cases. What's the expected time to solve those cases or to process those cases?
Sure. That's difficult to answer, because it varies based upon the case. Let's take a sexual assault case. It's one case versus a burglary case. There are a number of steps and things that we need to do with a sexual assault case that take, could take a considerable amount of time if a suspect wasn't in custody from the very beginning of the case. That case takes a long time to reach a resolution to. A burglary case, if we get a print or DNA from, and again, a suspect was not arrested inside the house or close by, that case could lead to a quicker resolution. It's basically a process of submitting the evidence, having it analyzed, and receiving it back. So we're a little bit at the mercy of how long it takes that process. So some cases, I don't like to use the number of cases as a a good representation of the actual workload of a detective. A detective that has maybe 10 open burglary cases may have a lower workload than a detective that has three very complex cases, a homicide, a fraud case, or an identity theft case. That detective has a significantly more more of a workload than the other detective does, even though that person had more cases in their queue.
I think my question is more like, give a kind of measurement to the public, say, hey, we have this many cases this month. Next month, we have this many cases. Is the backlog growing bigger or smaller? How can I make it smaller?
For us, the most effective way to reduce the backlog is to get more resources into our Bureau. We're we're at half the investigative positions in the currently in the work in the Bureau than when I went in a couple of years ago. So the only way that I see to have effective resolution to reducing that backlog is to get more investigators in our unit.
Is this a resource need in the report last month?
Yeah. I think I can speak to that as well. Generally, the career path for someone to be a detective is to pull somebody with significant experience from our Patrol Division. Patrol Division always has the or those needs are the priority. So as those needs are met, then we can go through a selection process and pull from Patrol to fill the detective spots. When there aren't enough positions filled in the Patrol Division, then we have nowhere to pull detectives from. So we have to work with a, like I said, we're resource constrained with lower resources until those needs are met, and then we can pull from there.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sure.
I have one more suggestion. If somebody has been a victim or a burglary, and they feel totally helpless about it, maybe it should be pointed out to them that the police will try to solve the case. However, there is a resource of your insurance that what is, what your insurance covers, even though it will not cover the sentimental value of the property, it will lessen the pain, number one. And number two, make sure you make a police report so at the end of the year, when you file for your taxes, you report this stuff, and also you will get some deductions as well on this. I mean, offer them an out than just like feeling left out on the cold.
Sure. And that almost goes back to Dr. G's question when I was giving some thought to what services may be available. In in your statement there, just by the nature of the workflow, a police report would have already been made, or they wouldn't have received that letter in the process, notifying them that the case wouldn't be further investigated. But I think to your point, maybe highlighting some additional areas that they could seek to help with their loss could be could be helpful. So we're happy to take a close look at that. Sure. Thank you, everyone.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Again, welcome to the two new commissioners. We look forward to working alongside you this next year. So before you this morning is just a recap of the 2024 draft work plan. This this draft was brought before the commission in January, so if there's any questions by the two new commissioners, we'll be happy to address those. During the January meeting, the only suggestion that we received was to include in next month's presentation in April, to include GIS, an overview on GIS and how that is incorporated into our CERT and MAP Your Neighborhood, and how it can be used in other programs throughout our both public safety sides, fire and PD. So this is still a draft. If there's any questions, we can certainly answer those, or if there's any additional suggestions. The only thing I would add is just remind commissioners, this is a fluid work plan. It can be adjusted at any time. And Chief Slinski and I commit that, you know, we adjust this as needed as issues arise in the community, but this is just a general workflow for us for the year. So if there's any questions, be happy to answer them. If not, we're just looking for a motion to adopt this and take it out of the draft and put it into a final.
Do you have any?
Chair Cervantes? Vice Chair Munoz? Commissioner Alseroff? Commissioner Donnelly?
Prove.
Commissioner G? Commissioner Holgin?
Yes.
Commissioner Liu?
Thank you.
Do we have a presentation on homelessness?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Leah Demarest, Senior Planner for Housing Programs in the Housing Division. Lieutenant Shannon Ribleado and I worked on this staff report. So I'm just going to give a brief verbal presentation on the city's efforts to address homelessness. And before I go through those efforts, I just want to give a brief overview of the recent point-in-time homeless count. So on January 23, the city participated in Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority's 2024 Greater Los Angeles Unsheltered Homeless Count. The count was conducted by South Pasadena Police Department, and they counted 15 individuals, three of whom were in vehicles. No other improvised dwellings were counted, such as makeshift tents, encampments, things like that. And also, I want to note that a representative from Los Angeles Homeless Services Services Authorities, or LASSA, attended this year's count in response to concerns about LASSA, including in past estimates, individuals by the Arroyo Seca Wash across the border in Los Angeles. So this raw data, this count of 15 plus three vehicles, was then submitted by the police department to LASSA, and LASSA will apply a multiplier based on their methodology, which is they draw from service planning area surveys. So they'll apply a multiplier to any improvised dwellings Um, so they'll, they'll apply a multiplier to any improvised dwellings, uh, including vehicles. Counted to generate their estimate of the total number of unsheltered people in South Pasadena. So as with past years, um, we expect that LASSA's estimate will be higher than those fifteen individuals counted. Uh, to account for the three vehicles counted. And then just as a, a reminder, in the twenty twenty three count. South Pasadena Police counted fourteen individuals in eleven improvised dwellings, which resulted in. A LASSA estimate of thirty-one unsheltered persons. And this count of thirty-one was down from fifty in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so moving on to programs, uh, the city participates in a number of programs to address homelessness in South Pasadena. First, the city participates in the Supplemental Services Program. It's administered by the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Uh, which I'll refer to as the COG. Um, this is a mobile outreach program. For people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And every Monday from nine AM to three PM, a multidisciplinary team. Staffed by Los Angeles Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, or LACADA. Um, is in South Pasadena to provide street outreach, housing navigation. Mental health support, case management, and homelessness prevention and problem solving. The city also takes part in a couple of other homeless outreach programs. Uh, these include. A homeless outreach service team, or HOST, and LA HOP. Since twenty eighteen, the police department has worked with the San Gabriel Valley HOST. Which comprises officers from police agencies across the San Gabriel Valley who provide outreach in participating cities. LA HOP is Los Angeles County's homeless outreach portal, and it's designed to assist people experiencing homelessness in the county with outreach services. So how it works is once a South Pasadena officer or a, a member of the city staff. Makes an outreach request on the portal, uh, a homeless services outreach team is dispatched to the area. Um, finally, the city participates in two mental health crisis response programs, the San Gabriel Valley. Crisis Assistance Response and Engagement Program, or SGV Care. And the West San Gabriel Valley Mental Evaluation Team, or SWSGVMET. Or MET, I don't actually know exactly what it's referred to, but I can all say MET. Um, while these are not specifically homeless programs, they do serve people experiencing homelessness. So SGV Care is a multi-city regional mobile crisis response program that's also administered by the COG. Um, it entails the response of a two-member mobile crisis team. To nonviolent nine-one-one calls from residents experiencing mental or behavioral health emergencies. Uh, the, the team, the, the care team is staffed by LACADA. Um, the same organization that staffs the supplemental services outreach team. And the team consists of a licensed behavioral health clinician and an EMT. And then in addition to crisis de-escalation, the team makes referrals to local area resources. Which includes coordination with medical, mental health, and behavioral health services. And then also for residents experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of homelessness, um, will connect them to homeless service providers. And uh, MET entails the provision of crisis intervention. And mental health support by a licensed mental health clinician. From the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health, and then also a police officer from, from one of the participating agencies in South Pasadena, Arcadia, and Monrovia. So the, that's just a, a sample of some of the programs. Um. Just wanted, so yeah, just want to reiterate that the city offers a range of outreach programs and programs that provide supportive services to people experiencing homelessness in South Pasadena. And then um, that's all in addition to. The city's more like broader work to expand stable and affordable housing opportunities throughout the city. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I have a question for you. Uh, when I go for walks on the Garfield Park. Uh, in the mornings, I see some homeless folks that come there and sleep there. And uh, nothing uh, that indicates that they are experiencing a mental crisis or anything. They're just looking for a warm, safe place to be. And it has also the same thing when I go to the libraries, I go by the library on Thursdays. And the, the people that used to actually reside there are gone. But it's, I still see some young people that go there and like, I guess they spend the night. Because they feel safe, it's, it's spending the night there. By the time I conclude my meeting, eh, the senior center, they're gone. So there is no reason for me to call anybody. So these are movable parts of the homeless. Homelessness or unhoused folks that we have. How are these people counted? Are these folks being taken into account? If they are not always the same and the numbers changes.
Um, I can also let, I see Chief Slinski standing, so if needed, he can elaborate. Um, but. To answer, I guess, the question about how they're counted. Um, it's possible they're not counted in that point in time count, um. Which is also another reason why LASSA applies the multiplier, but um. Regardless of whether or not they're included in that count. Uh, any of these, uh, any of these outreach programs that I mentioned would serve any folks in South Pasadena who are experiencing homelessness and who. Want the, or who are open to receiving the assistance and the connections to the services provided by those teams. Um, if it's during hours where the, any of those outreach teams are not in South Pasadena, it takes some coordination. Uh, for like, for example, for the supplemental services team on Mondays. Um, I will sometimes be contacted by people experiencing homelessness, either by phone, or they'll come into City Hall. Uh, and they'll ask for resources, and I will provide them my own referrals, and I, and I believe that um, police department. They also have referrals that they can provide. Um. But I'll also let them know that the supplemental team is available on Mondays, and I can coordinate with the team. Um, staff and, including PD has their cell phone number for the team, so we can. Coordinate a time and a place to meet on that following Monday. Um, so I, in my experience, uh, staff, including PD, will work with the individual if they're, if they are seeking assistance. Um, and I believe that the police department does some outreach as well, and I'll let Chief Slinski elaborate if he wants to.
Thank you, Chair. That was a great question. So the police department, part of this is getting cooperation and building partnerships. So that's why the police department's still heavily involved. We're the first ones out there. And sometimes we offer those resources, and initially what we've seen is a lot of people don't take them. So it takes repeated effort. Right? It's about building that partnership and having them build trust in the police department. So. We have our internal team, which are our HOPE team, homeless outreach program. And that's been in effect, I want to say since about two thousand fifteen, and it's been very successful. Over the years, we've been able to. House or find housing for a number of uh different people in the community, and, and some have even come back and, and testified in front of city councils to the services that they received. So anybody that the police department comes in contact with twenty-four hours a day, we can offer those services. They don't always take them. But we still want to make sure that we offer them. And then what we do is we'll call one of our service providers. If it's off hours, they'll usually come the following morning. And if it's during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, uh, we'll, we'll stay with that individual, that, that person that's needing help and assistance until the uh, the service provider comes. And then we can hand them off from there. That's typically how the program works. As Leah mentioned, there's a number of different programs that we participate in. One is the HOST program, and, and some of you have, have heard of Measure H funds from the county. That is, that is supplied by the county. And that is a county-wide law enforcement program where we go out and we uh. We get resources from other areas as well as we'll lend officers to their areas as well for a day to do nothing, no enforcement, but strictly outreach. We have our internal HOPE team that I mentioned. And then uh, we also set up uh, times where our staff will go out and uh, walk areas that are known to house people uh that are homeless. Or uh, uh, maybe. Need mentalist, mental health assistance, will walk the areas where they may congregate. And, and just to try to get the word out, try to pass out resources and a number of different things related to that. And to Commissioner Cervantes's uh question about the count. The count, it, it, it's not always accurate. That is one of the problems with the way they do the count. Uh, is that it doesn't take in consideration, although we count fifteen people in South Pasadena. As, as Leah mentioned, there's a multiplier that is applied to it, and, and there's multiple multiplier or different multipliers. Depending on if it's an individual that we found in a uh, in a tent versus a car versus walking the street or of some nature. So. The reason why that's important is, uh, I've talked about this before. There's a case law, Martin versus Boise. Which uh, really delineates how a city can, can enforce its overnight camping or, or loitering ordinances. And there is a federal judge that, from Los Angeles, that is dealing with Southern California, and he's recently opined that. In order for a city to, to enforce those, seventy percent of their homeless population, you have to have uh emergency shelter for. So that's where we take our number of roughly thirty this year. We're, that's an estimate. We'd have to find housing for, or emergency shelter for thirty of those if we want to enforce the ordinance. The other half of that is, is, let's say that's uh, what roughly twenty, twenty people. Uh, where do we place those twenty people? The closest shelter we have is Union Station in Pasadena, but that's already pretty much uh used up by Pasadena. So we have to start venturing out to other. Other locations, other areas to try to find that shelter. And that becomes the real challenging part. Uh, some cities have built their own homeless shelters because of this recent case update. Uh, Whittier was one of them. I was speaking with their city manager at a conference. There's some discussion there and whether or not the millions of dollars they spent for that shelter is really serving its purpose. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of debate around it as far as how, how cities tackle this. Uh, it, it certainly isn't just a police department problem. It really is a community problem and, and how South Pasadena solves it. You know, we haven't quite figured that out yet, that model. I know there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of partnerships, but it is an ongoing problem. And we're adapting to it as, as we see. But um, the one thing I will say is the, the San Gabriel Valley Care Program that we recently adopted, that has been a tremendous help. We're seeing. Because it is the same practitioners that are coming out, they're building that trust with our, with our residents and, and homeless population as well. But it's also freeing up officers. So once we make that handoff uh to the, to the care team, that officer is now free to go back in the field and do the things that police officers need to do. Um, what typically. When we come across someone in a mental health crisis, uh, that could be a five-hour call. Where now, we're looking at maybe a one-hour call. So we're really cutting down. It's about being efficient. Uh, as we talked about with the, the detective solvability uh presentation, it's about doing more with less. We're trying to be more efficient. Uh, utilize resources better, and this is just. It's, any questions on that that I can answer? Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Is it, it Leah or Leia? Sorry.
Leah.
Leah, thank you. Great, great presentation. Definitely a, a very important issue. Um, I, I noticed a lot of these programs or, or some of these programs um are limited to San Gabriel Valley uh cities. Are there any um. Programs or mutual aid agreements or anything that you're aware of? Um, obviously, as, as we all know, South Pasadena also borders the city of LA. Um, which has its own i- issue and its own services. Um. Is there anything that, that the city is doing to cooperate? Uh, or work with the city of LA for uh persons experiencing homelessness who may move between the two?
Um, okay. So first of all, thank you, Chief Slinski, for talking about HOPE, because I think I completely skipped over that in my presentation. Um, but uh, there are no like mutual aid or partnerships that I know of between uh Pasadena and city of LA. As Chief Slinski was saying, uh, shelter beds and other resources and services available. To people experiencing homelessness are. Much lower than the need. Uh, so that often means um, these, these outreach teams that we work with, SGV Care, if they, if there's um. If there's a need to do housing navigation or connect an individual to a shelter. Um, oftentimes the shelter isn't, is in Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, but it's no, it's not like a formal agreement or anything. It's really just. Identifying any available beds or resources. And um, connecting the individual to those. Um, and then, I don't know, in terms of PD, I don't know if there's any sort of. I'll let Chief Slinski answer that part of it.
We're going to tag team this and get a line answered. Uh, we don't partner specifically with the city. We do with the county. So two, two days a week, we have LA County Department of Mental Health that rides, that clinician actually rides with the patrol officers, so that's our connection there. And they're able to place, uh, obviously they can bring a lot more resources into us, but they're able to place uh someone that needs immediate assistance, whether it's mental health or, or housing. They're able to use the county resources, but nothing specifically with the city of LA. So.
I've, I've got two quick questions. Uh, Leah, the fifteen folks that were identified in the count. Would you characterize them as longtime unhoused, folks that are living within city limits, or were these, the people who were passing through at the time?
Um, unfortunately, I was not at the count. I was the previous year. So I can't speak to those individuals um that who were counted. I do know in general, I mean, I, I think there's a mix, and I can also let Chief Slinski back in on this one too, but um. I mean, just among uh, city hall staff, uh, of cross departments, um, and PD, like, we. We are familiar, and as Chief Slinski said, there's a, there's a big trust-building component of like. Multiple interactions before folks are more receptive to services and support. So there is um familiarity with longer-term. Uh, people who are, or people who have been in South Pasadena experiencing homelessness on a longer-term basis, and there are. Like a good number of um people like that, and then there are more. There are also folks who are just passing by, but I can let Chief Slinski elaborate.
That's a great question. Uh, typically, a- and this is a general assumption based on my experiences, that they're more long-term. Uh, we, we do see some uh new faces, uh, but they typically, you know, probably less than half of them come and go. Uh, during the daytime, though, I think that's when you see probably a larger population of homeless people in South Pasadena, and that's simply because. From, from our experience and talking to them or contacting with them, they're coming into South Pasadena to use our services, and then towards the evening, they go back to wherever it is they're staying in, in most likely Los Angeles. That's where we see most of them. But in terms of those that specifically call South Pasadena their home, I would say probably a good ten out of the fifteen are long-term citizens.
Uh, and I, I have a follow-up question about the Martin v Boise requirement for seventy percent.
Correct.
So those beds just need to be available. The, the people aren't compelled to use those.
Correct. They're not compelled to use them, but they have to be available for South Pasadena specific. So uh, you know, we could. For instance, uh, uh, Union Station might have available beds that would meet our needs, but. They're contracted with Pasadena, so they have to have their seventy percent available at all times. And, and that would allow them to, to enforce their uh ordinances on, on overnight camping. We, we do have an ordinance that we can enforce on overnight camping in the park. Uh, that's why if you do see someone, please call us and we can, we can go over there and investigate. But uh, as far as overnight camping in other areas of the city, unless it's specifically a park, uh, then, then we cannot. That's, that's where we come into a little trouble.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I have two questions. One is the how the homeless related to the crime rates? Or is this a perception or is there real numbers?
All right, I'm just sitting, standing up here. So it, yes, there, there is a, a direct correlation between the number of homeless that we see during the daytime. Uh, towards our petty crimes. So petty thefts, uh vandalisms, uh, certainly there. It, it's seasonal, in warmer times, we'll see more people out or, out later at night, so the crime rates will usually spike during those times. Uh, and as I mentioned, they're usually crimes of opportunity, uh, the minor thefts, uh. Vandalism, sometimes in our commercial district, uh, windows get smashed, those type of things. So there is a direct correlation. The, excuse me. The other thing is if you look at our crime and our pin mapping, if you look around the Gold Line Station, typically we have more of those type of crimes. Within a, a circumference around that. So yes, to, to your question is, there is a direct correlation.
Okay, my second question is, what can we do, uh, both as communities? Okay, my second question is, what can we do both as community or the police officers? When you find a homeless people, what what you should, what's the procedure? You want to say, hey, here is the the flyer. You can contact a phone line or you can go to a shelter. What can you do when you meet with a homeless people?
So in terms of law enforcement, really, unless there's a crime being committed, our hands are really tied. And that that was to the to the point of the Martin. Cases, it's just another example of how law enforcement's hands are being tied. The the best we can do is offer them resources. Uh we can't compel them. We can't take them anywhere. Uh we can. Try to build that relationship with them. We can try to encourage them, but that's about it. What we do ask, though, is any resident that has an issue or sees uh someone that might be experiencing a mental health crisis or in need of help is to call us. We'll go out there and at least uh get to know that person, find out if they need help and offer the resources. If we if we don't know about them, then and and we don't come in contact with them, then there may be some resources that we have that we we they could have used. So we we would ask that business owners and residents call us if they if they see something like that. The other thing is is there's appropriate. Uh there's appropriate means for for these individuals to get resources. What I see a lot of is uh some of our businesses that are catering to to uh panhandling and whatnot that go along with the homeless. And we ask that they they not do that. I mean, it's certainly their right if they want to. But it also creates other issues. It's like a balloon. If you press in one side, it's bound to pop out somewhere else. So if if individuals are panhandling and they are getting money from uh businesses or resources or services. Uh you know, it it exacerbates that problem typically. Uh there there are appropriate places such as shelters. Or uh care centers that we can direct those people to to get the resources they need. Uh and it's more long term. It's more sustainable as opposed to panhandling at a business or uh you know, a restaurant, something of that nature.
So we can provide this information in the education session uh April and the May.
I I'm sorry, can you repeat?
We have some education session for uh the May and April have been in our work plan. Okay, provide this information to the community?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, thank you, Leah. I don't know if we have any more questions from that panel, no? Um uh thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we go to the next topic here. And I see this information reports. Do we have it here? On you? Oh, okay. Is there a motion to accept this? Do we need a motion?
No.
I'm sorry. No, it is a receive and file informational report, so there's no motion needed.
No motion needed. Okay, thank you. Is there any information reports that we need to do now? No? Okay, so let's go on to the next one, which is City Council Liaison Communications.
Thank you. It's really wonderful being here. Um I feel like I've come full circle because I've been public safety commission for a few years, a long time now. So thank you all for your service and your great comments and oversight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so let's go to the next is Staff Liaison Communications.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick updates for fire. Um so I'm happy to announce, as always, I like to give a little update on our staffing. Um I briefed the commission um a few months ago. So we had hired two firefighter paramedics. They're both on six months now, both doing very well. And then we just completed a very successful recruitment in January. Um where we've hired three new laterals, um all three laterals. One one is already on the floor. He's been he's been with us about three weeks, doing well. And the other two are slated to come on at the end of this month. So that will bring our department to uh fully staffed. Um and put us in a good position to address potential retirements coming up um this year, next year. So um yeah, staffing is is looking good for now. Um. Our staff currently is participating in regional brush training. So this is something that we bring up every year early in the season, especially in this city, being that a quarter of our city is considered a high hazard. Brush interface area. So this is regional training that we're going through and part of the training is 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 just making sure that all the departments that participate in the state as part of the master mutual aid agreement. Um is is trained, is equipped, has all the proper communications, uh which we are, I'm happy to report. And being fully staffed will enable us to go ahead and participate fully in this master mutual aid agreement. Which this season is projected to be a very busy brush season, just with all the rains we've had. That's the double edged sword. We certainly need the rain. Um but it promotes growth. And then when we heat up and the winds kick in, so that growth turns into flammable vegetation. So. Um we're kicking that off early in the year. Um and then finally, just to the two new commissioners, as always, um our doors are open for a tour. Of the the Emergency Operations Center is housed in the fire station. And we also offer up ride alongs. Um those ride alongs can be anywhere from an hour to six hours. It doesn't matter. Um we can certainly have you ride along and just see what it is the fire department does. So we'd be happy to have you join us. Um that's it. Brief updates. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Yes, I have a question for you. On the new hire, new hires we have that we have now. Uh how is that as a whole for your uh group? How many females do you have now?
So we currently have no females. And traditionally, we've we've hired one female in years past.
Yes.
Um she ended up marrying one of our firefighters.
Oh darn.
But no, but on a seriously, no, I you know, we we recruit and we we promote um uh females and. You know, small agencies just have a harder time um recruiting females. That's just the reality for fire. Um and you know, not to shy away from that, there's 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 fewer females that want to be firefighters than law enforcement typically. What we're finding, we only see that from the academies, how many females are coming through fire academies. And um when they succeed, when females successfully come through fire academies. Um you know, there's there's a lot of recruiters there trying to uh recruit them into their organizations. And smaller departments just have a harder time. That's the reality. But um that doesn't go, um that question is not taken lightly because we we do put the word out and um. You know, that that reality isn't without effort.
Good, thank you.
Uh huh, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. And and we'll definitely take you up on the uh on the offer to to do a tour and a ride along. I appreciate that. Um. I just forgot my question. Oh, sorry, hang on. Uh with with the um potential for a anticipated busy brush season. Uh I I recall a few years back, the city um utilized goats.
Yes.
Is that something that you are exploring?
Yeah, so we put a placeholder in the budget every year. So in the fire department's budget, we do, we put a placeholder for brush management. So. If I could back up just a little bit and talk about how we address the vegetation management in the city, it's kind of a three three pronged approach. Um we contract with the county of Los Angeles to provide brush clearance on the privately owned unimproved properties or privately owned vacant land. And that's a really effective program. The county comes along and will facilitate the inspection and removal. Um it's an opt in program, and then they simply uh recoup those costs on the county tax roll for those property owners. Um on a second, then the the privately owned improved properties, those with homes, we inspect those. Our our engine companies get out and inspect those, and that's the property owner's responsibility. And we have a very. Our our homeowners in that hill section take that very serious, and we very seldom have an have a an issue where we're not getting compliance. Um and then to your point, the third one is the city owned unimproved or the city owned vacant land. And so we work closely with our Public Works Department. Who they oversee the contracting with either Land Care or whoever they're currently contracting with, the city maintenance. To clear out the city owned vacant property as well. So the goats, the goats, they're they're. They're an effective tool for certain areas of the city. So that's the key. And every year. We evaluate whether or not that's going to be the best resource to use and whether or not it's cost effective. The cost of goats hovers around fifteen thousand dollars to do five acres. Now, hand crews can come in and target areas that we feel in in some years are much more cost effective because we're targeting. The exact areas we want away from structures and eliminating very specific fuels. When you bring in goats, you're you're basically coordinating off five acres and you're letting the goats eat for a month. And they are non discriminatory in what they eat. You have to watch them very closely. They would prefer to eat um green rose bushes as opposed to dead brush. So you really have to monitor that they're not getting through those containment lines and eating actual vegetation that uh we want to be there. Um and at the end of the day, they trample a lot of the fuel as well. So some of that flashy fuels that we really want to get rid of. The goats step on it and they trample it down. And when the goats leave in a month, that can flash back up and start to grow again. So um but for those larger areas, it can be very effective and we keep a placeholder there and it's not out of the question to use them on a year to year basis.
Thank you for that. And and one thing that you uh that I didn't hear when you went through the three um strategies.
Yeah.
What is Caltrans's role uh on on Caltrans owned vacant properties?
So great question. So Caltrans is is responsible for their own um for their own areas that they that they manage. So it when we do our brush um inspections, we include Caltrans easeways. Um easements, and if there's a need to clear it, which there is every year, then they're responsible for that. And we have direct contact with them. Um and and sometimes the the compliance is slower than we'd like, but they usually do comply once we start ramping up the uh notifications.
And are are there enforcement mechanisms on that? Because I I know, like, me personally, I I do live in the hill area. And there's a Caltrans property across from me that is overrun with with brush.
Yeah, there there is. In fact, um it we're probably thinking of the same one. Um there are certain areas where it's where we have that are more problematic than others. So there there is enforcement. Um and and for us, once we get to that point where we're not getting compliance, we transfer that over to the code enforcement officer. Um through community development. Um and then one final thing, we will be doing a badge pinning um on April thirteenth. Um we're finalizing the flyer. We'll be giving out um actually uh six badges um to one promotion and five new hires. So um all of this this commission would certainly be invited and so expect a flyer coming via email with that invitation. Thank you.
Hey, Fertile. Commissioner uh G has a question.
Sure.
Hi, so I was just listening to the question on whether there were any females that were hired. And I remember from the Raftellus report that our salaries for our police force. Is not as high as that of surrounding communities. Is this something that um that maybe it's more of a question for Ms. Braun? Um whether we have as much in our budget to be able to recruit. Well qualified officers and to recruit more females for the force. Is that? Is this something that's being considered improving the salary level?
Um is that a, just to be clear, is that a question for staff or for council liaison?
Both.
Um well, to answer the first part, we we haven't done a like a um. You know, scientific analysis on what the key reason on is why we haven't been able to attract females. But you do bring up a good point that typically when you look at the agencies who um are not having, you know, are having successful recruitments. Um they tend to be the higher paid uh departments. Um a- and as far as my perspective on just on where we're going as a city, so that you know, I I can say as the fire chief, I've been in the city a long time. And we've always enjoyed very good working relationships with our city council, and and I don't want to speak for the for the council liaison. Um but public safety has always positioned ourselves to to work alongside uh city council um and and really. Um the meet and confer process is kind of a unique uh opportunity where the fire chief and the police chief. Um we're not directly involved in those negotiations. The union presidents and those representing the associations, they're the ones meeting um with the city negotiator. Um and ultimately, the city council to look at um to to look at current salaries and negotiate, you know, the best package possible. So um yeah, it's kind of a dynamic question. It's kind of hard to uh to pin that one down. Um but in this in this budget season, you know, it's it's. I've heard the phrase, I like the phrase, it is all hands on deck to look at every opportunity to raise revenues for the city. Um and look at opportunities to um, you know, make sure that we're ensuring that we keep our public safety fully staffed and recruitable. Go on, Anne.
Um well, that's a really the question of the day. Um. So, you know, I think we do work very closely with um Brian and with Paul and and you also know that. Public safety is fifty percent of our budget in South Pasadena. So we have approximately a forty million dollar budget. About twenty million goes to public safety. Um it's one of the fundamental reasons a city exists, right, is to provide public safety. We are currently, in terms of the budget, we just got a mid year budget update, and instead of the two million dollar deficit that we had approved. We're up to a three point seven million dollar deficit. Um and we just got some five year projections that project us running out of reserves in three to six years. So this uh so we've got some financial challenges ahead of us, but they're also opportunities. And I think what we are looking at doing, we've created an ad hoc committee to try to look at, and and I know that the staff is doing it as well. Where are there opportunities for more revenue? Where are there opportunities to maybe do some cost efficiencies? Um so that's in process right now. Um I know, well, I shouldn't say I know, but. The I think the P O A and the Fire Association have done some of their own salary surveys. Um I have not seen those, but just so you know, when I was on the Public Safety Commission, um I worked with the P O A a little bit. And actually, I performed my own salary survey from the M O U's online with other agencies. Um and at that time, I think we, you know, I had. On the commission, we felt that the our police officers were probably about ten percent below market. And it's it's kind of a subjective thing, and I'm sure the P O A has done something much more scientific than than I've done. But um you know, the M O U's for the police and the fire are coming up next spring. So I'm sure that we'll spend this year really looking at all of those factors. Um but it's a it's a it's a challenging yet opportunistic time. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. It does. Uh I'm just wondering whether we should put some um measure up. For, you know, this is me speaking as a community member, not as a commissioner, um whether we should, you know, get the community to rally behind. Um increasing salaries for the police force and whether we should put something on the ballot. Um I'm just speaking off the top of my head, but um is this something that you think? Would be wanted in the community? Or um do you think that the challenges that you're facing will resolve once the economic? Uh. Atmosphere of is is better.
So, yeah, um that's a good question. And again, I think that's an option that could be considered as we kind of look at our financial picture as a whole. Um you know, again, of the forty million dollars um in revenue, on the revenue side, about twenty million is from property tax. And so as you know, property tax is capped by Prop thirteen. So about half of our revenues as the city, really, we have a predicted growth rate each year of two to three percent. That can be impacted by turnover of houses because people's property may be reassessed if houses sell, but. Right now, I think, you know, there's there's maybe twelve houses on the market in South Pasadena. So so we have some, you know, built in. Um uh yeah, yeah, kind of restraints on growth. So if half of your revenues, you're only going to see two to three percent increase. I mean, that's just what that is. Um I think we do have the utilities tax, and I think that number, I might be wrong about this, but it's about six million dollars a year. Is that? Do you guys have a better feel for that? Anyway, the the next biggest revenue source is the utilities tax, which was voted in by the community. Um that tax is is staying about constant, but I think there's some concern that as, you know, people pull their cable bills and people are using more. Different kinds of things, that that tax may go down. I I I don't have that off the top of my head. The other kind of the next, I think, biggest piece of the revenues is sales tax, right? So we're a city with really great businesses, a lot of small businesses. Um and um but but really wonderful businesses, but we don't have Walmart or Target, which of course. You know, I think most people don't want to have big box stores in South Pasadena, but that then, of course, limits your your. But that then, of course, limits your your sales tax. And then there's other revenues like services, fees for services, developer fees. Business licenses, those kinds of things. So those are currently our main sources of revenue. So I think again, we're going to have to get creative to do a tax measure. You know, we're also looking at streets that haven't been repaired in forty years. So and some other deferred maintenance on some of our buildings. So again, you know, with challenge comes opportunity, but we are kind of at a, at a point right now where we're going to need help from the community. Just figuring out where we're going to go. And I I have no doubt that we will come up with the answers. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you for that perspective. Perhaps we can recruit more volunteers to help with public safety. But thank you, that that really helps. Your answer helps.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning again. I think to Commissioners, or to Councilmember Brown's point is there's lots of opportunity available. Coming together and putting our minds together and finding out a solution. I did want to touch on the shooting over the the last week at Garfield Park. I know I've received a number of calls and I'm sure some of you have. And that investigation is ongoing, but I do want to point out that that really is an anomaly for the park. I think in the last twenty years, I I can't recall anything of that significance happening there. And as Detective Abdallah, I'm sorry, Sergeant Abdallah mentioned. We had one person in custody within five hours, which is pretty remarkable considering the amount of evidence and the time of day and whatnot that detectives had to comb through. There are still a number of suspects that are that are outstanding. We've identified some. And as to his solvability presentation, you know, that is something that is on our radar. It's the highest priority for us, so we are devoting all our resources right now to that. Hopefully, we'll, we'll come to a conclusion on that case very shortly. And as we do, I will certainly update all of you on that. But I do want to to stress to the community that, you know, the the park is safe to use. I've had a number of parents that have come up to me and said, well, I don't feel safe going to the park anymore. And what I want to assure them is that the police department has a strong presence out there. We will remain strong out there. And as I mentioned, this is really an anomaly, an isolated incident in the last twenty years. I cannot think of anything that that rivals to this level, so. But if anybody has any questions or concerns, I I encourage the community to call the police department, speak with us. We could certainly talk about. You know, the the crime trends or safety measures that we can put in place. Some residents have indicated there's a. A desire to see more video surveillance type cameras out there, more flock cameras, those types of things. And that's certainly that's something that the police department's looking at. You know, we're balancing needs and budgets and. And what's the most effective and efficient way to provide safety to our community? And certainly we're taking that into into consideration. As I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Donnelly accompanied with a couple of other commissioners, we went to Beverly Hills. They have a very state of the art, real time crime watch center, which is all video surveillance and drone. Based resources. They've been extremely successful at it. But there is a a large price tag that comes with that type of. That that type of system. So it's it's not only resource heavy in terms of equipment, software, but also in terms of personnel to monitor. But it's certainly something that South Pasadena is looking at to see how we can implement that for a city our size and for our needs. I also wanted to touch on our hiring. As as I mentioned earlier, it's all about opportunities. So to fill some of our gaps, we're using annuities from retirees from other law enforcement agencies. They're coming on part time. We have the first three that should be starting within the next month. They're going to provide some much needed assistance. To fill some of our vacancies and keep up with our administrative projects as well as going through those cases that Sergeant Abdallah mentioned. So that they can start focusing and applying those metrics to them so we can start separating what needs immediate attention as as opposed to. What doesn't. And then lastly, if you could pull up the slide. Commissioner Cervantes asked that with the rain and and the weather that we highlight where people can. Report potholes and roadway debris and issues. And if you go to your public works site on the South Pasadena, please, or South Pasadena Public Works homepage there. On the third one down, it says pothole or sidewalk repair. There is a telephone number at six two six four zero three seven three seven zero. Or you can email Public Works, that's PW Service Request dot com. And then if if there's one other option, if you go to. I think it's your app store, you can get the South Pasadena mobile app. And there is a click the button feature there that you can report any issue within the city, whether it's streetlights, it's abandoned vehicles, it's potholes. All service requests from from that app will go straight to the appropriate department. They'll get disseminated and then you'll get a response back when. When staff goes out and fixes the issue. That's all I have, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, I have a request for potholes. I noticed we have developed quite a few on account of the rain. I was wondering if we could publicize for the public here. Either by what you call the two newspapers that we have. What's available to them for the younger population? Perhaps they just want the sites. Where can they can report the thing where where it is located at. But for the older population that is not a computer savvy. Give them a phone number where they can call and report exactly what's going on. But we are really feel that we should get a jump on it. And let them know that this is available, that we have it and that we care. We don't want to go into things saying, oh, this city is abandoned, nobody is doing anything. I just spent so many thousands of dollars on my transmission and so on and forth. So I I'm just thinking, being proactive, is there a possible way to contact any? Public means of communication with a note saying where they can refer to these problems to?
Absolutely. The city has a number of different options in terms of communicating with the public and we can certainly put that out.
Any other, any other question? Do we have any commission, Commissioner communications?
I don't have anything.
I have, I have one quick thing, Mr. Chair. I was happy to see that the South Pass Police Department is participating in the Baker to Vegas relay race. It's a great competition and I I know it's a good morale boost. So I know they were selling T shirts to support their effort. And they had a fundraiser at a local restaurant. Not sure if they're doing anything else to to support the effort. But happy to, happy to support them and 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 let the public know that that's that's something that's going on.
I have a little comments. I have a technology background. We use to develop software and hardware for the law enforcement markets. So. I could be a resource for the public safety, both community and our staff. We evaluate those new technology, how can we adopt new technology into our daily workflow? And improve the public faith. Thank you.
One last thing, what I I wanted to say is. We have as a whole, we have a great community. And we have a very good police force. This is no dear police force from nineteen seventy or nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety. This is the two thousand and twenty two or two, excuse me, twenty four police force. But I really, I'm sorry, I just fall behind the times. Anyway, but I really wish the public was more aware of it. I would like to suggest, and I don't mean just the police, but also our fire folks. I know your activities are, keeps you so busy. But I really feel that if we could have uniformed police. Mixing of some of the events that we have, meet the people, let the people know. That there is a person behind the uniform. That there's a person that cares and that will give them a hand. Not just a block force that say police department, but rather an individual. And a community thing. I think this would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner G would like to say something?
Yes, just to to. Further, Mr. Cervantes' comments. In regards to communicating how well our police force is doing and the services that we have. I noticed that CERT was, training was being offered this month and unless you do a search yourself. You don't know that it's going on. So it'd be nice to have community flyers or the banners that you see along Fair Oaks to. Just advertise some of the great things that our our force is doing, particularly with CERT. So you know, there's the refresher course in May and the the basic training courses in March. Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have any comments that like to close this meeting. Does anyone? Check on this motion?
Tagging.
Okay, I think session is closed. Thank you.